This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles, here. Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Eckles?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we thank you so much for the blessings of life, for the opportunity to be here today, to be free. To God, we ask a special blessing on the Klausner family and their loss, on the Urosty family and their loss, God, and others who have experienced death recently. We just pray that you'll provide the peace, the grace, and the mercy as only you can. I pray you'll give the City Council wisdom today in the decisions and choices they'll be making that will affect this city. Thank you for your blessings, in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Put the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and City Council meeting held on April 28th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of April 24th through April 30th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor.
I would like to ask the Salvation Army Lieutenant Dennis Hayes to come up first.
For as the Salvation Army was officially started in the Gadsden area in 1915 and has continued its service to God and individuals in need since that time. The Salvation Army, an international movement, works 365 days a year to help recycle lives. They have lost their way or been forgotten by society. It is an evangelical part of the universal Christian church having its message based on the Bible. It's ministry motivated by the love of God and its mission of preaching the gospel of Jesus Christ and meeting human needs in his name without discrimination. The Salvation Army provides shelter and meals to homeless men and women seven nights a week. Assistance with food, clothing, medicine, rent, and utilities is provided through its social service office to enable clients to stay in their homes. Last year, 2,684 persons were assisted by the Salvation Army. Whereas on May 12, 2015, the Salvation Army Advisory Board will celebrate the Salvation Army's 100 years of service to the Gadsden area. Therefore, I Sherman Gattan, the Mayor of the City of Gadsden and the Gadsden City Council, Alabama, hereby join in proclaiming May 12, 2015, as Salvation Army Day and May 10 through 16, 2015, as National Salvation Army Week in the City of Gadsden and expressing our sincere appreciation for 100 years of service and contribution to the citizens of our community.
I'd just like to say that I'd like to thank the community for all your support. You support us well in this community and I look forward to us being able to work in this community for another 100 years. Thank you.
Now I'd like to ask the members of the Watson family if you would like to come up, please.
Whereas Harold Justice Watson, Sr., was born April 23rd, 1932. The fifth child born to the union of the late Wallace T. Watson, Sr., and Tommy B. Watson. Whereas Mr. Watson worked for over 44 years in the field of music education and employed by the Gadsden City Board of Education, serving as a band director at Carver High School for many years until its closing and serving as band director at Litchfield High School until his retirement. Whereas Mr. Watson has a deliberate and original yet graceful style that cannot be duplicated and received numerous awards and certificates for his outstanding performances. He taught private lessons to many students and also mentored many students who followed in his footsteps and now reside in many parts of the country. Harold Justice Watson, Sr., was an active member of the Alpha Fraternity and was affiliated with many professional organizations locally and nationally. He was a multi-talented man and a skilled and well-established entrepreneur. Mr. Watson was a licensed funeral director for over 50 years and was the proud owner of Watson &amp; Sons Funeral Parlor, serving as a successful businessman until his health failed. Mr. Watson made his transition to eternal life on April 14, 2015, leaving a legacy of love and care to all humanity, his devoted wife, and his six sons. Thirteen grandchildren, fourteen great-grandchildren, three brothers, two sisters, a host of nieces, nephews, and other relatives, and many dear friends. Therefore, the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Gadsden hereby join in proclaiming May 5, 2015, as Harold Justice Watson, Sr. Day in the City of Gadsden and expressing condolences to his family and celebrating his many accomplishments and contributions to the quality of life in our city.
Thank you. On behalf of my mother's husband, Mr. Harold Watson, and our father, we would like to thank you all for all that you've done to recognize him. It is an honor and a pleasure to stand here on his behalf this morning and we are grateful for what you all is doing in the City of Gadsden. May God bless you all. Thank you.
Is Carol Larkins here?
Whereas music plays an increasingly important role in our world today. Music is one of the most sublime human pursuits and is subscribed to by all races and creeds. Music is the language of all peoples and one of the greatest forces in creating peace and harmony. The National Federation of Music Clubs, dedicated to encouraging young musicians to increase in musical knowledge and to advancing American music and its cooperating organizations, join forces to direct attention to the dynamic influence of music in everyday living. Whereas the National Music Week theme 2015 is Music: Heartbeat of the Soul. Now therefore, I Sherman Gattan, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, by the virtue of authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim May 3 through the 10th, 2015, as National Music Week in the City of Gadsden and ask all citizens of this community to observe and take part in activities recognizing the importance of music, musicians, and musical organizations to the culture life of our city, state, nation, and world.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and also the City Council for this honor. We have, the Gadsden Music Club has been in Gadsden for 100 years and we want to preserve our music, not only in our city and state and nation, but also for our schools. Our school's children are our future to keep music alive. And I just went Sunday afternoon down at Wallace Hall over at Gadsden State and the EYO orchestra was playing and I want to tell you, I would put them up against any orchestra in the country and you would be amazed at the caliber of music that those young people played. And we are so proud of Gadsden for helping us and you City Council members and Mayor to keeping us, helping us keep music in schools. Thank you very much.
I would like to say something. The Symphony Orchestra, the Youth Orchestra, and the, I guess you would call it the ballet at the Cultural Arts. A couple of years ago, my daughter was in that and we went to Washington, DC and the ballet performed and the orchestra was down in the pits below. You couldn't see them and it was at John Jones University or something. It's a law school there in downtown Washington. And it was packed. Of course, you know, wasn't a lot of us there, but it was people from throughout the city there that comes there. Not Washington, New York City, I'm sorry. But anyway, when I was leaving, I sat down outside and I was listening to people come out. And when we got through, the orchestra came up and everybody saw them and they couldn't believe how good our orchestra was. They kept saying, "That was just kids. That's high school kids." And they really did a great job representing the City of Gadsden. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We do again want to make sure that we give ample recognition of both the Gadsden Music Club and the Watson family. And we do appreciate the Mayor for presenting those proclamations today. Item number eight under Unfinished Business is a resolution authorizing economic development agreement with Rare Hospitality International. After a public hearing last week, this resolution was tabled for seven days. It grants a rebate of 50% of sales tax payments up to six years or a maximum of $325,000, whichever comes first. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move that we table.
Second.
We table it. For 11 days, seven days indefinitely.
Indefinitely.
Okay, so we have a table, an indefinite table and a second. Any discussion?
Well, that doesn't mean anything except that the paperwork hasn't been completed as all. It's still coming.
Yeah, that's a very good point. It does not mean that this deal is at any risk at this point. It just means that it's not ready. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the resolution for an indefinite period, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table.
Okay. Item number eight B is an ordinance authorizing agreement with I-359 East, Inc. and Sherwell, Inc. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. It is a parking lease agreement for property adjoining the proposed Longhorn Restaurant site. The amount is $1 per year for 40 years with four additional five-year options to renew. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move that we table it indefinitely.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Do we want to substitute or does that come after this?
Substitute.
We want to substitute first, I believe.
I think it would be proper to substitute the amendment first and then table it.
Okay, so do we have a motion to substitute?
We have a motion to substitute the amendment.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to substitute the amended agreement, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries for the substitution.
Now we'll vote on the substituted agreement.
I move that we table it indefinitely.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the ordinance indefinitely, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table for an indefinite period.
Number eight C is an ordinance authorizing TIF funds for expenditures related to Longhorn Steakhouse Restaurant. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. It is for the development of the parking site, including paving, landscaping, lighting, and stormwater management facilities and the amount is $75,000. What is the pleasure of the council?
And for the third time, I move that we table it indefinitely.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the ordinance for an indefinite period, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table indefinitely.
Could I make a comment on that right there? The, both parties have agreed in principle. We just don't have the written signed contracts. The $75,000 is going to do lighting, paving, landscaping, and that property, the property is our property. We own that. And that's where the money's going to do that for the property on our part.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 119 Park Street in District 1. Vicki, Darisa, Tuck, Lorenzo Thomas, being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Could you state your name and address, please?
Vicki Tuck Thomas, 1145 Summit Place, South Side, Alabama. In reference to the house at 119 Park Street, I 100 totally agree it's past a nuisance. Being that I am on disability, I'm not able to tear the house down. It needs to be torn down because it's also can be dangerous because I have been told that in the winter time, a lot of drug users and a lot of drunken people going and sleep at nighttime, possibly could make fires to it or whatever. I don't want them to cause death to anyone. If I had the money, I would have torn it down many, many years ago. And it does need to be torn down. If the city can assist us in tearing this house down, I would greatly appreciate it. But at this time, and I don't see nowhere in the near future with me being on disability, that I have the money to tear it down myself or to have it torn down.
Councilman.
Thank you.
Council President, I have a privilege. You understand that if the city tears it down, that they'll put a lien on the property. And that way, you know, you would still have to pay if you wanted to keep the property. But if you didn't want to keep the property, you could deed it over to the city. I've just, that's just information.
Being that lives would be saved from people going in there sleeping in the winter time and making fires and stuff like I said. Even though my great-grandmother left me the house and I cherish her to this day and I love her to this day still. In order for lives to be saved, and if you all are willing to tear the house down, then I will go ahead and just deed it over to the city.
I don't know which one would come first. If you deed it over to the city, that would be lit. It doesn't matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But I would like to say that I spoke to Brian Harbison. Three years ago, remember? I came to your office and spoke to you about this house on Park Street. And you said that you're going to seek to about being torn down. And I do have witnesses who I carried in there with me and that was three years ago. I had spoken to him about that house. And he said he would seek to about being torn down.
Okay.
Thank you.
I need your name for the records.
My name, Lorenzo Thomas. B. Thomas, Sr.
Yeah, makes you a senior.
1605 East Broad Street.
Okay, thank you.
You might want to give us your telephone number where we can get in contact with when we get the deed fixed up.
You want me to go ahead and get that?
Yes, ma'am, the City Attorney.
Yeah, you can actually provide it. Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I am Brian Harbison with the Building Department. This case has been several years in the working. We just reopened it last October. As far as tearing down the property, we do have to have a resolution from the council to get on private property unless the property is conveyed and accepted by the council. In lieu of what's been said here today, I would still ask that a resolution be passed in case something comes up in the title where we can't receive the property. We can still remove the house. I would ask council for that. Thank you.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move for abatement.
Second.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
The public hearing regarding nuisances at 1418 Cansler Avenue in District 5 has been canceled. There is a new owner, therefore a new case is necessary. Our final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 2407 Alder Street in District 7, Ramona L. Dunn, being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Sir, if you could, state your name and address, please.
Darrell Dunn, 1704 Summit Drive, Gadsden, Alabama. And I want to speak on behalf of my mom because she's deaf and she can't hear a word y'all are saying.
Okay, that's fine.
But in regard to this, we just got the notice about the abatement and she has documents in her pocket, in her billfold here, where she's had a new roof put on the house. It was stolen. She's had guys hired to come over here and do work. They've ripped her off. They took advantage of her.
Took the plumbing out?
Stole the plumbing, the hot water heater. They've done everything. I mean, we can't sit over there and watch it. I mean, she bought the house for her granddad, helped her grandson out. He demolished it, destroyed it. And she's kind of stuck with a mess. But if you'll just give us a little bit of time, we will take care of it.
We're trying to get it fixed.
My sister and I will do whatever we have to, but she can't afford us to give this place away. She's got a substantial investment in it. And I don't know what we're going to have to do, but with some time, and like I said, we just got this abatement notice and we really haven't had time to make a plan. But whatever it takes, we will do it to make it right. I mean...
That's going to take up all this, too.
Well, that's true. I mean, they've stolen ladders. They broke, I mean, there's people live there that they not see it going on. I mean, there's, you know, what do you do? I mean, I can't stand over there and guard it. But, and, but whatever y'all deem that we need to do, we will do. She's trying to make arrangements to either sell it, improve it, or whatever. But she's on a limited income and she's doing the best she can. But like I said, I'm retired now. I can help out. My sister is still working. She said that if she has to, she'll take that alone and get the house remodeled. But we will do whatever we have to. I just need to know what it is exactly that you want and how much time that we do have.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in April of 2013. There have been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve. And we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Now, could I speak directly to Darrell Dunn?
Sure.
Okay, Darrell. I think under the circumstances, I'm going to ask for a 30-day table on the property because I know the building looks, you know, fairly good. I understand your situation. I will ask for a 30-day table. In that period of time, if you can show substantial improvement to the property, then we'll revisit it at the end of that 30 days. Okay? Okay, we need to do that. All right. That's my recommendation. 30-day table. Second.
Okay, we have a motion for a 30-day table and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table for 30 days.
Item number 12 is a resolution awarding bid number 3287 for zero-turn commercial mowers. The NEAPA coordinator has recommended awarding the bid to Farm Town, Inc. and the amount is $10,313. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
We have one opposition. Motion carries to adopt.
Number 13 is a resolution approving issuance of alcoholic beverage license. King's Olive Oil Company located at 618 Broad Street has applied for an on-or-off premises retail beer license. The company is already licensed for table wine at this location. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item number 14 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Monroe Telecom Associates, LLC, doing business as the Center for Municipal Solutions. This is for preparation of a wireless telecommunications facilities local ordinance and for wireless telecommunications management. The providers making application to locate towers in the city will be responsible for fees associated with the services. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay. Point out who the no's are. Okay, we have two no's. Motion carries to adopt with two persons voting no.
Okay. Item number 15 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Millman, Inc. This is for actuarial consulting services related to Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement 45, or GASP 45, regarding accounting and financial reporting by employers for post-employment benefits... or GASPY forty-five regarding accounting and financial reporting by employers for post-employment benefits other than pensions. This is for a two-year period and the amount is eleven thousand dollars per year. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If you, um, do not recall, this is, uh, or many of you may recall, this is, um, GASPY forty-five is something that, uh, was actually, um, implemented to have the ci- have the cities, half-cities to actually, uh, identify the, um, the liability and identify the liability and its accounting relative to non-pension-related retirement benefits. Uh, and so that requirement also requires that every two years you be audited and, and restate, uh, that, that amount. So this is as it relates to that, we have to go through that, uh, that auditing process every two years. Okay? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business. Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. Asking for unanimous consent on a resolution authorizing agreement with AM Data Services for free software, user license, and fifty percent discount on maintenance for five years as a beta tester for FORCE LMS software.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt, please. Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, under discussion, I'm going to ask Captain Jackson of the Police Department to come up and explain this.
Good morning. I'm Captain Jackson with the Professional Standards Division, uh, the GASPY Police Department. First of all, I want to tell you folks, we've got an outstanding police department. Uh, I'm very proud to work alongside a professional group of men and women. Uh, they're really outstanding. We're asking, uh, today we're asking for your permission to enter into a beta testing agreement with the FORCE LMS, uh, software program. It's basically, it's called FORCE LMS, Forced Liability Management Solutions. It's a six-month, uh, beta test. Basically, it's the last stage of testing this company is doing before they release this software, uh, for commercial release. They're going to sell it. It'd be, it would cost us seventeen thousand dollars if we bought it outright. But they're going to give that to us for free. Uh, if any time during the six-month testing period we don't like it, whether it be after the first week or after the sixth month, we can give it back, uh, at no cost. Uh, but I think that we're going to like it. I think if it, if it does what it advertises it, that it will do, it'd be very beneficial to our department. Uh, it'll, it'll be able to, uh, analyze and identify trends, uh, within our department that'll help us develop training, uh, and safety policies that'll minimize risk and maximize officer and community safety. Uh, it, it can give us things, like at the click of a, a button, we'll be able to get things like, uh, the most common timeframe, uh, that our officers are using force, whether it's in day, night, what time of day or night it is. Uh, who are we using force against the most? Is it male? Is it female? Is it intoxicated people? Is it sober people, uh, people on drugs? Uh, you know, what are their, uh, what are their races? Are they white, black, Asian, Latino, their sizes, weights, things like that? What techniques are we using the most? Are we using pepper spray the most? Are we using, uh, taser the most? Are we using baton manipulation techniques the most or empty hand techniques the most? And are those techniques working? Uh, for instance, I'll give you an example, say, a technique with a, a baton, um, uh, 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 joint manipulation with a baton. Perhaps the officer's on Alpha Shift, you know, whenever they report their force, it's working fantastic. Maybe not so much on Charlie Shift. And that'll give us the, the data that we need to analyze. Maybe we're not teaching it right. Maybe there's deficiencies on our end and we need to teach it better where, uh, everybody gets served, uh, the same way. You know, what, it, it'll give us things like which techniques, uh, cause the most injuries, uh, to, to, to the suspects. It's just very important stuff. Uh, if it does what it says it's going to do, it would benefit the department greatly. Uh, there's no cost for six months, if after six months, which will be in the new budget year. If it's something we like, we'll have something tangible to come to you folks and show you, hey, this is what we had. This is what we've got now. It's so much better. We would like to have that. That's where the fifty percent will get a greatly discounted, uh, uh, on the maintenance program portion of it. It would be like twenty-five hundred dollars a year until basically two thousand and twenty.
Thank you, Captain Jackson.
Well, I want to explain the camera system. I know that don't have anything to do with this, but...
Okay, yes, sir.
Let the people know that we do have cameras and...
Yes, sir, no problem, yes, I'm over there. Uh, we've always been ahead the curve. The, the, you know, the policies and procedures of our police department, we've kind of been ahead of the curve, uh, and in front of a lot of the municipalities nationwide or whatever. It's probably why we haven't experienced as much scrutiny as some, as you see in the, on national news and stuff like other departments do. Uh, you know, before there was video technology, uh, we required all of our officers to, uh, audiotape arrests or contacts with citizens. Then when video technology came about, you know, we bought the video technology and made all of our officers wear it before it was the in-vogue thing to do. Now it's something that's just sort of demanded by the public, you know, that, for there to be video proof of what happened in arrests. I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. Um, but we do now, like, part of what I do in Professional Standards is I do internal affairs complaints. We don't have a whole lot of, uh, internal affairs complaints now. Uh, and, but when we do, I mean, it's not like I see one camera angle of something. I usually have four or five camera angles of the incident. And it's very easy to either prove or disprove what a person said happened or didn't happen. So we, we definitely tape. Every one of our patrol officers has a body camera that can tape up to eleven hours of, of video. And they have twelve-hour shifts. Obviously, they're not taping everything, uh, not typing their stuff riding around in the car. But when they get out and they have contact with a citizen, making arrests, making traffic stopping, that's all recorded.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Captain Jackson. And, uh, and as you stated, I, I heard, I heard the comment made earlier, uh, and I, and I think this is very valid. You know, one of the, one of the credibility hits that, uh, police departments across the country take is when they're, um, when they're asked to preve- provide data and information, many of them are slow to provide that information. Uh, and, and that, that causes them to take a credibility hit. But in this instance, uh, you, you can see that, uh, we will have the ability to co- collect that data. It'll be right there at our fingertips and we'll be able to provide it and, and really be transparent and, and forthcoming with that information. Um, so I, again, I think this is a move in the right direction. And of course, in any beta testing environment, it also gives the police department the opportunity to, to impact what the finished product looks like before it gets marketed to the general public. So, so again, I think this is a good situation for us, out, even outside of the financial benefit.
Derek, we've always been a, uh, proactive. We really have. But right now, we're going into a phase on the razor's edge of this thing and be more proactive than we've ever been on the leadership of this police department. And I appreciate them so much, and especially with this, uh, product we're fixing to get hold of. It's going to be really something else.
Yep, indeed. Okay. Any other comments? Clerk, could we vote it?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one, please. It's a resolution reappointing, uh, member Nancy Stewart to the Board of Education. Term expires in June of twenty, twenty twenty. I'd ask for unanimous consent, please.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt, please.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
This is National Teachers Day, and I've seen it fit to do this today since she's a Board of Education member. She has been on there, uh, five years already. This is make her second time being on there. She does a good job. All the people at Walnut Park and all the schools she represents seems to like her. And I think she does a real good job on there.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yeah, Mr. President, I have one. It's a resolution one forty, resolution amending job classification number for Assistant Finance Director from number one twenty to one twenty-one.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt, please.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? There's no discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Department reports, committees, boards. All right, remarks by the mayor and the council. Mayor?
Uh, I, I just want to say that we really appreciate all the cooperation. Uh, this is my third term and, uh, the councils that I've worked with, uh, we all get along really well and I just think that's so important. Everybody, we don't try to hide anything. Everybody knows all the details before we ever start to try to pass something or do something. And it's been that way ever since, uh, I've been here and I, I appreciate that. And that's the only way we can get positive things done. Uh, we'll say that, uh, about three or four years ago, uh, or even longer than that, when police and fire went on the state retirement, uh, I think the retirement rate, which is the rate that we pay towards somebody's retirement, that, uh, the rate was, uh, somewhere around three, four, five percent. But they went on the state retirement because it was, their private retirement was so underfunded. Uh, and, and so our rate went up. They had told the people, before I got here, it would go up to about seventeen percent and then come back down. But it did and it went up to twenty-seven percent, which is a lot. Uh, and, and that's fine. I'm glad that they got on it because they would have not had a retirement had they not gone on state retirement. Well, the state legislature, uh, about three or four years ago passed a bill, uh, because the retirement systems is underfunded, too, of a two-and-a-half percent, uh, percentage that the people would have to pay, uh, the employees into their retirement, more than what they were already paying. And they, the state left the, uh, decision up to the cities and the counties, which is their way of dodging the bully that's making a tough decision. But anyway, we did, our rate was twenty-seven percent at that time and it was the highest in the state. Uh, it's now down to twenty, which is, I think, we're number two. But that's okay. I'm glad we've had the money to pay it for people's retirement because I want nobody working thirty years or whatever and then can't have any, uh, retirement. So I'm glad we're doing that. But we, when we passed the two-and-a-half percent along to the employees, we gave a one-and-a-quarter percent raise. So it only made it one, one-and-a-quarter percent. And, uh, you know, to offset some of the costs there for what everybody had to pay. Well, uh, the fire department, not the whole department, a little special interest group who always sort of want to get their way, and if I had their names, I'd call them all out. But it's about four or five, they decided to sue. So they sued and we won. It was a state law anyway. I mean, it was ridiculous to sue to start with. And, uh, they lost and then it went to, uh, Atlanta. They lost in federal court in Birmingham. Then they appealed it, uh, to the federal court, uh, I think District Eleven or something, I don't know. Circuit, okay, but anyway. And, uh, they lost over there. It was constitutional and it was state law. But the problem I have with it is it cost the city about eighty thousand dollars for a frivolous lawsuit. I mean, you know, if it hadn't been state law, they'd been different, but it was. And eighty thousand dollars would go a long way towards paying, uh, raises, uh, something more on insurance. Uh, there's a lot of ways we could use that eighty thousand dollars to benefit the employees. But when you have a special people, a small group, that want to try to dictate everything that happens and misrepresent it, that's what happens. So that eighty thousand dollars, uh, that goes to them. So if you work with them, tell them about it.
All right, Councilwoman Toles?
I'd just like to say, first of all, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers, especially Mrs., uh, Marionette out there and, uh, Miss Nettie K. Robinson, Miss Marionette Watson. Watson family have gone, uh, way back. I've known them all my life. I've even babysitted some of the boys. So, um, Mr. Watson was very special, uh, in our life. In fact, I had an opportunity to be in his band. And then turn around, I had an opportunity to be his boss when he was the band director at Dunn. So, um, I appreciate the Watson family. I also like to continuously to encourage our young people. You know, we had youth in government, but we need to encourage our young people about getting an education. You're going to hear me say this all the time, because it is very much needed. And to the parents, our schools, our school system is not going to be any better until you get involved. Parents have to get involved. So I encourage parents to get involved. And if you don't have children, it still affects you. We all need to get involved. Thank you.
Mr. Apples?
I'd have heard you all not talking.
That's right. He just ditto's everything I say.
Councilwoman Worthy?
Yes, I just want to announce that our community meeting will be this Thursday. It's always the first Thursday of the month at five-thirty. This Monday will be at Thompson. I rotate from Thompson to Carver every other month, so. And I'd just like to say thank you to the Watson family for coming. We appreciate all that he did for the community and thank you all. And also, uh, we had a forum last night at, uh, Mount Pirammon Church. And to reiterate what the doctor said, Councilwoman Toles, education is the key. We have to educate our kids. And we were trying to bring all these manufacturing jobs to the city. But when we bring them here, and I, and I tell this, I spoke at my church and I told this, our young people will have to be able to pass the year analysis in order to get the job. And we need to encourage and not discourage our young people and black men from taking the fire, uh, test and the police test. The last four tests we've given for the police exam, we didn't, we didn't have one black person to take it. So how can you become a police officer if you're not going to take the test? We need to encourage them. When people on the radio calling them Uncle Toms and snitches and all this kind of stuff, it's not going to help. We have to encourage, not discourage, people from taking the police test and becoming a police officer. If you want a better system, if you want a better city, and if you don't like the way it's going now, take the test, become a police officer, and you can change it. But I think we have a good police department. I really do. Now, I, that's not saying a hundred percent of them. You have bad apples in everything. You got bad teachers. You may even have a bad counseling person, you know? That's in every job. Everybody's not perfect. So, and they going to make mistakes, but we got a good captain over there. I've worked with him. As a matter of fact, we've worked together. We was partners in the warrant division, fugitive unit. But, uh, a- and, and he holds their feet to the fire, him and Lieutenant Sanders. Now, when, when I was working over there, now, I didn't always get along with him because of something. We going to make mistakes. As long as you got somebody there holding their feet to the fire, that, that's what we need. And if they don't videotape, if we do have the incident, they're rolled up. They don't sugarcoat it. They write them up. Now, all the patrol officers don't like that, but that's just the way it goes. And that's going to keep us, you know, from having these type of incidents everybody else having right now. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Billings?
I don't have anything today.
Councilman Cannon?
Thank you, Councilor President. I just want to personally thank everyone that serves on the board in District Six. I know I don't do that enough, but I think we've got twelve or fourteen boards in District Six. And I want to personally thank everyone that serves. They do a good job and, you know, they spend a lot of time serving on these boards and committees. And I appreciate everything they do. I just want to announce my meeting for Walnut Park and South Guest, and it'll be at Banks Park, Monday at five-thirty. Banks Park, Monday at five-thirty. That's all I got.
Councilman Reed?
Yeah, I wanted to thank Brian Harbison for remembering firefighter Logan Klochner and, uh, my friend Mike Giraski and your prayer this morning, Brian. I thought it was very appropriate, uh, they will leave a void in this community, that's for sure. Um, I did want to ask the memorial service for firefighter Klochner, what time is that? I didn't see, I know it's going to be tomorrow at the airport fire station. But I didn't see a time, and I thought people might be interested in, between now and then, to know. Okay? If anybody knows, please let's get that out. And Andy, I'd appreciate if you could get that in the paper if it's not already, and I, I didn't see it, okay? So, yeah.
Okay. Do want to echo that, uh, that sentiment. We send our prayers and our thoughts out to the, to both those families that were, that were impacted by tragedy uh, here over the last few, couple of weeks. So la- last week, um, was a busy week for me, and I think this week is starting out as a, as another busy week. Um, we, um, we had the, the privilege of, um, an induction, uh, into the Alabama A&amp;M Alumni Hall of Fame.
Hall of Fame. Um, I'm really, really excited about that, glad that it, it occurred, but I, I think I'm more excited about how it made my parents feel. Um, you know, my mother, my mother got dressed up for that, and she looked good, and she, uh, she, you know how it is when you get, when you know you're sharp, and you're so sharp that when the event's over, you don't go home? That, that was my mom. She just, she didn't want to go home after it was over, and, uh, it was just good to know that I'm, I, I, that, that, that event made them proud. And, and as I said in my, uh, recet, in, in my speech, um, you know, the people that, that recognize those kind of, uh, accomplishments and recognize the true value behind them, understand that you only get that kind of thing when you have good people behind you. And, uh, and again, I do appreciate my family and friends and colleagues and everybody that has served to support us. Uh, Councilman Billingsley and I, along with, uh, Ms. Katie and, uh, and Mr. Blackwell from Gaston City High School, also, uh, had the opportunity to go interview some teachers, uh, or prospective teachers. And, uh, when I tell you that I have never been more proud of Alabama A&amp;M University, I mean that. We got a chance to talk to some very bright young minds, and, uh, I'm encouraged. Uh, I got word from Mr. Blackwell yesterday that actually a couple of those people had actually reached out to him and provided resumes. We're serious about trying to recruit, um, role models and, and, um, and people that our young people, uh, teachers that our young people can relate to. Uh, so, uh, so that was encouraging. It was really encouraging to sit down and hear some of the questions, and we got a chance to pitch the city. And, uh, I think you would have been proud of us, uh, because we got a chance to say a lot of good things about our city. And a lot of people, uh, including Dr. Martin, who's over at the School of Education, he comes here all the time. He eats at, uh, top of the river quite, quite regularly. And, uh, and he just, he talked about how we opened his eyes to a number of things and things that we had accomplished here. And, uh, we had a good dialogue about, you know, the differences in terms of how Mark, how Madison County and Huntsville can recruit from an industrial standpoint versus how we can recruit. Uh, so, uh, so again, if you, if you think for a second that a lot of those things that people, you know, kind of chatter about in the community are not on the radar, you, you couldn't be more mistaken. Uh, those, those things are being addressed, um, and it takes time, but, uh, but those things are definitely being addressed. And if I want to get home tonight, I better say something about this last thing. Um, this morning at about, uh, 3:47 a.m., I guess, um, I, I became a G-Paw. Became grandpa, yeah. Became a grandpa. Uh, little Noah, Noah Williams was born this morning at six pounds. Um, and, um, and I tell you what, you know, I, you, you never know how you're gonna feel about being a grandfather until it happens. And I couldn't be happier. I tell you, I couldn't be happier right now. He's a, he's a bundle of joy, and I'm gonna stop before I sit up here and cry and give y'all something to laugh about, but, uh, yeah, I, I do want to announce to the world, little, little Noah Williams is here. So, uh, we're just really excited about him. Uh, if there's nothing else, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.